All right, we'll start the meeting tonight with the pledge of the flag. The pledge of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, he was just turning off his laptop. All right, we'll start the meeting with a public hearing to consider a resolution transferring the sum of up to $15,000 from the village's highway repair reserve fund in order to pay for the roadway striping work to be completed in 2019. Mo, can I get a reading of the publication?
Sure. Notice is hereby given that pursuant to section 7-706 of the village law and section 6D of the general municipal laws of the state of New York and pursuant to resolution of the village board adopted July 18th, 2019, a public hearing will be held by the village board of the village of Baldwensville at Village Hall, 16 West Genesee Street, Baldwensville, New York, on the first day of August 2019 at 7:30 PM to consider a resolution transferring the sum of up to $15,000 from the village's highway repair reserve fund in order to pay for roadway striping work to be completed in 2019. At the time and place of the hearing, all interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone wishing to speak against the proposal? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing?
Oof.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's carried. Move on to the regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from July 18th, 2019?
Oof. I'll second that.
Any changes, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to address the board, come to the microphone, give us your name, address, and what's on your mind.
I hope that you all received our letter that we sent the other day. We've gotten into this now a bit of a penmanship. Again, we're here to oppose our opposition, state our opposition to the proposed sidewalk on Mildred Ave., and we just wanted to state that anything we had heard or seen, that's everything has stated replacement program and not sidewalks, new sidewalks. And this was also stated in Syracuse.com, March 20th, 2008, stating that the district is for all the streets in the village where sidewalks currently exist. And so, I'm just, again, we're here to plead our case and ask to think about this, but also to establish sidewalks where none have existed and go nowhere, and then put a lot of hardship and burden that goes way beyond cost on the residents, specifically the icy hard-packed snow from the plows, which will cover the sidewalk and is undesirable and not needed. We're just asking to please, and we ask all of you to really reconsider this and please have a heart and listen to the neighbors of the street and this residence.
Very good.
And we hope you had a good vacation, Mr. Mayor.
I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in and thanks for the nice wishes. Anyone else?
We're back again. I'd like to read the letter that I sent in case some of you didn't get a chance to read it. Dear Mayor Clark and the Board of Trustees, we attended the village meeting on July 18th to voice our concerns over the proposed new sidewalk on Mildred Ave. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. We were very disappointed in the village engineer's reactions to our apprehensions. Mr. D'Arcangelo seemed to dismiss our concerns. His commentary about the condition of Bayberry and his observation that the Bayberry neighborhood would benefit from sidewalks was very superficial and personally subjective. I had the opportunity to drive through the Bayberry community and my observation where the homes needed upkeep, painting, weeding, trash removal, not sidewalks, to make the neighborhood more attractive. Our home and our gardens are very much a great pleasure to us. We spend many hours maintaining and updating the grounds. Not only is it a great deal of work, it costs us a lot of money, and I believe this hard work and expenditure has enhanced our street. In addition to the obvious, the cost, the liability, the maintenance, we are concerned about the river birch in our front yard. We have a very shallow front yard. It only measures 19 feet from the front walkway entrance to our home. The excavation of the proposed sidewalk will cut through the roots of the tree, compromising that tree's stability. We had to remove three large mature trees in our front yard to replace our sewer line. The tree stumps and the roots remain in the ground directly below the grade and will be disrupted during the excavation for the proposed sidewalk. Our sewer vent will be directly adjacent to the proposed sidewalk. The grade from our front yard would have to be adjusted to the level of our neighborhood's driveway, which is currently approximately a 45-degree angle above our yard's edge. This will cause water runoff into our yard as well as create a ramp scenario for the kids riding on the sidewalk. This could prevent a trip hazard or an obstacle to a child riding a bicycle or a skateboard on our sidewalk. Our sewer vent would also become a target because it would be directly adjacent to the sidewalk and for individuals who show little respect to other people's property. And our biggest concern is the logistics of removing snow. As noted, we have a very shallow front yard and extensive side garden to maintain, leaving us very little room for accumulated snow. We need to have access to the front of our house and a place to put snow that will not damage that garden. The space that's proposed, the space that the proposed sidewalk will occupy is part of the space we now utilize for snow removal. Maintenance of the sidewalk in the winter will become a major issue. The proposed sidewalk will detract from the charm and the character of our house and our yard that we worked for 36 years to create a home. We're seeking your support and help in this matter and hope you would reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would speak for Steve. I don't think he dismissed any of your concerns. I think he was explaining, we've been doing this for 10 years, and everybody, every year somebody has similar concerns, and we've been able to work around all of those.
We've overcome obstacles far greater than anything that's in your yard.
Oh, that, he wasn't dismissing?
Old tree stumps, the grade between you and adjacent property, they're all things that need to be done, but...
The number-one concern is where we put the snow.
That, that's fine. I understand that. I've never dismissed that. So, to say that I, you know, have dismissed your concerns, I understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tyler. I am the son of Lori here. We are residents of 51 Mildred Ave. It's one of the houses that would be impacted by the sidewalk project you guys are planning. So, I did a little digging, because we are opposed to the sidewalks. We do not have existing sidewalk infrastructure already there. And I looked at the zoning recommendations from basically the town website, and we're in residential District 1A, or R1, which in the, basically in the brief for the requirements for the lot requirements, there is no requirements for sidewalks to be had in the area. So, in regards to the replacing of the existing infrastructure, there is really no requirement by the zoning laws to have sidewalks in our area. And I also want to stress the point that the expenditures for the sidewalk itself is rather high for, and what is viewed by most of us as an unnecessary thing. The, we've lived there for about maybe 20-plus years. We, our road hasn't even been paved, let alone seeing concerns about sidewalks. I mean, we have, we have a large rut that has been there for about two years. Every time a plow goes by, it shakes our entire house. So, it just kind of seems like, kind of silly that we're focusing on sidewalks when there's larger matters that can be addressed. And, kind of, in regard to, because we were, I did some measurements of where the existing sidewalk is on the other side of the road and how it would impact our, where basically our current yard runs. And there's, there's sewer access, there's telephone poles, there's already short driveways that most of us on the street have, which if, if there's a sidewalk, where the, where those driveways would be, there's a very high likelihood that there would be cars parked on the sidewalk. And then we, and apparently that was addressed last week at the meeting, and you guys said it was basically, unless someone complained, that'd be the only time that, you know, a ticket, someone might receive a ticket, which I, again, kind of find silly that we have to, us as residents in the village, we have to kind of, we have to hope that we don't, we have to hope for the good graces of other people, which is fine, and that's nice, it's good to be neighborly, but to run the risk of potential tickets for something we don't want and that's something that is unnecessary? I mean, we have fireworks at the amphitheater all the time, people line our street, they park on it all the time. No one wa, no one walks on the sidewalks. They walk right down the middle of the road. So, for events and stuff like that, like kids ride their bikes in the road, because we're on a side street, we're not on a main street, so no one really uses it anyway. It's, it's, and we, since there's so, people on the other side of the street, they wanted sidewalks like years back, so they put them, and they maintain them, they're happy to have them. And we, in the process of talking about all this around our neighbors, they were kind of surprised in the first place that we were being forced to get sidewalks, because the very common response was, well, we already have sidewalks. And we're like, yeah, that doesn't make any sense. And now, and it was also a, apparently last time, I think you brought up the recommendation that it improves the, basically the property value or the aesthetic of the village as a whole.
It holds your property. It's an element that holds property value.
Okay.
Assist in holding property value.
So, I did a little digging on that, and it's actually, according to Zillow and other kind of retail, or not retail, real estate type websites that, you know, sell homes and whatnot, I think it went through about three or four, and one of the least sought-after things is actually sidewalks. And as many of the recommendations, that's actually a very dated and not requested requirement at this point. So, it says a counterargument to that is...
Is it Zillow?
I think it was Zillow, Houses.com, one of the larger real estate brokers in the area. But yes, they, it was very low on the list, and actually in most conditions, people said that they would, are more likely to not purchase a property if they have sidewalks, because of the maintenance, the liability, those things that, you know, because if that sidewalk's not shoveled and someone slips and fall, slips and falls, then we are liable as the homeowner, which no, most people don't want that responsibility.
It's true.
So, I guess that's, you know, some concerns that I had, just as kind of an extension of my mother, because she gets nervous in these situations.
It's fine.
So, I would ask that, you do think, consider that? Our household has difficulty with expenses, especially large expenses as a whole, and what we're looking at is about $1,500, and that is a lot for our household. So, I would just please take that in consideration, even with a tax, even spread over, you know, at a monthly tax increase, that still comes out of the monthly paycheck.
Very good.
Please consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time to come. Okay. All right. Is there anybody else?
Let me have one more.
I think there's another.
I was not able to attend the village meeting on July 18th, but I want to make it clear, I am opposed to the new sidewalk on Mildred Ave. I have lived on Mildred Ave since 1953, and this has not been an issue. At 93, I do not want the headache, loss of beauty, cost maintenance, or the liability a sidewalk will bring. Please revisit each street on an individual basis. Since this is a bond and not a state mandate, you have in your power to cancel the sidewalk project on Mildred Ave. Currently, the sidewalk on the opposite side of the street is barely used by adults or children. Even people in motorized chairs use the road. Please, I would appreciate it, you do not spend my money on a sidewalk, I oppose and feel want to utilize.
Thank you. Could you give us your name?
Pardon me?
Could you give us your name? Your name?
Winifred Motic.
And your address? Your address?
43 Mildred Ave.
Okay. Just for the record, so we know who you were.
I, our houses are closer to the road on south side of Mildred Ave than the houses on the other side, on the north side.
Okay.
They have a lot larger area for lawn space we don't.
Very good. Thanks for coming in and talking to us.
Thank you.
Yep. Is that everybody? Everybody get a chance?
For this week, I guess.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to trustees' comments. We'll start with Andy.
All set, just the agenda, thanks.
Bruce?
I'm going to stick to the agenda tonight.
Agenda for me, too.
Mark?
I think the agenda's fine. Thank you.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick things. Today, we were invaded by 200 bicyclists riding in the Empire Ride for Roswell. It's a seven-day trip from Staten Island to Niagara Falls, and they stop along the way, have, they have rest areas set up where they have, Mike would understand because he's a biker guy, but the stuff that energizes people and replaces what they've lost sweating, and so they were taking shots of pickle juice and eating green olives, you know, Nutrelo with bananas on a piece of bread, a lot of watermelon got eaten, they had little sliced oranges, and I got to tell you what, it was very ego-building to hear people say what a nice place they thought Baldwensville was. This is the best stop on our seven-day trip. It's on the river, it's peaceful, it's beautiful, we, this is, we look forward to stopping here every year. So, that's very nice to hear, and I had put out a request for volunteers, because I thought they needed a lot of volunteers. It turns out they have some of their own people working, and they just needed one or two people to supplement. So, I put in an emergency call or text this morning to my niece, Andy's daughter, and she said, sure, I'll go down, and she took over. I mean, she was making sandwiches, she was cutting up fruit, she was, she just jumped right in, and they didn't need anybody else, and she did a great job. So, I wanted to say publicly thank Kim Dryden for all the help she gave today. I think she made a few friends in the process. Their goal is millions of dollars for cancer research at Roswell Park, and this, the 200 riders, they got a phone call. I was leaving at about quarter after 3:00. The guy who organized this thing seven, eight years ago got a call, somebody donated $20,000, and that, that put them at the million mark for this year's ride. And they had raised 77, 700, yeah, $7,700,000 over the six or seven years they've been doing it. So, this year, they finally hit a million in one year, and they were just ecstatic and, you know, it, as people, people had shirts on, they had friends and relatives who had died of cancer, and it was, you know, pretty emotional for some of them. And then they were going to Weed Sports Speedway and spend the night. They have a crew that comes in, sets up tents, air mattresses, they have a catering crew that comes in and feeds everybody, they have a trailer that has showers in it, and everybody can get a shower, and then they get up in the morning and make their next trip. And the organizer said, you know, it's kind of nice when you sandwich this seven-day trip in with a start at Staten Island in the shadow of the Statue of Liberty and you finish at Niagara Falls. And he said, actually, the trip, once they turn from Albany and head west, the central strip is the nicest riding area of the whole state. So, very nice, the people are from 37 states and Dominican Republic, Panama, and they're hoping to expand it to, I think they have to pay so much for the trip, which is like a vacation, and then they go out and get sponsors to help fund the cancer fight. So, these people were, all want to know about why all the boats were over there, and I was pointing to the island, they said, big concert tomorrow night, there'll be three times that amount of boats tomorrow, that's a hotspot, and geez, can you hear it over here? Yeah, sometimes you can hear it out in Lysander, it depends on the way the wind's blowing. They're very intrigued with our village. They said, stop by sometime when you're not riding your bike, come have dinner at one of our restaurants and would love to see you. So, that was a terrific day. And I had a visitor over the weekend, college buddy I hadn't seen in 49 years, stopped in Sunday and stayed till Tuesday, and he said, all I want to see is kind of what makes Baldwensville tick. So, we took a ride around on Sunday, I showed him our parks, our trails, went out on Papier Mill Island, he just thought that was the greatest thing. I mean, he lives in Texas, which is very hot and dry, and to have a river running through your community was pretty cool. And then on Monday, we went to breakfast at the cottage, and if anybody's ever gone to breakfast at the cottage, it's like Cheers, and he thought that was pretty cool. We brought him over here to the village hall to meet everybody, took him over to the baseball field, Reeves Field, because Steve Grilli had a camp going, and Steve Grilli had a son who pitched in the major leagues, and Greg's son Zach pitches for the Yankees, and they thought, well, they really get a kick out of meeting each other, and they did. And Jason was there, so we got to talk with Jason. Took him up to SU to see the basketball and football facilities, and I said, what was the highlight of your trip? He said, I just loved being in Baldwensville, what a beautiful village you got. He said, everything is so nice and neat, that river going through. He said, I understand why you like living here. So, not a lot of ego-feeding as far as the village over the last few days, so...
Invite him back in January?
I didn't, I told him, I said, it's not always like this. I said, you would not like it in the middle of the winter, but, and he said they only get about two weeks of winter. But he said, this time in Texas right now is terrible. It's up 100 degrees and just pounds you. So, it was a nice, nice couple of events for me to hear what I already think about our village. So, all right, that's all I have. Move on to department heads. Our attorney, Bob?
I'll speak with the agenda.
Okay. Code officer on vacation, village clerk, Mo?
Just wanted to say that our replacement for Linda, she's been here probably a couple weeks, and everything is going very smoothly, and I think she's, it'll be a good fit.
Very good.
Otherwise, I know that the court is having its annual audit tomorrow, so it'll be done. And I know usually that the auditor, she, she's very impressed with how organized they are and how everything is just so, it usually goes quite fast.
Good.
Otherwise, I'll stick to the agenda.
Very good. Treasurer, Anna?
Everyone has their May financials. Hopefully by the next meeting, you will have June and July. I'm getting there. If you find any questions on these, please let me know.
Okay. Thank you. Move over to the other side of the room, and go to Senior Senator Ruth.
Just want to remind folks that our car show is coming up. It is this Monday, August 5th, from 5:00 to 8:00 on the grounds of the senior center. Come on out. I know some of our Mildred Ave people have come to our car show and hope to see them there again this year. Also, want to let people know that Congressman Caco's office asked us to host a program on scams, so Federal Trade Commission representative and U.S. Postal Inspector representative will be there to talk about common scams that are impacting our seniors and how to avoid them. So, that is Wednesday, August 7th at 11:00 AM. I want to encourage people to come out to that. And also remind people that the Rotary Senior Citizen Picnic is coming up. That's Wednesday, August 21st. You do need to make a reservation by the 16th, so you don't want to miss that annual picnic. That's a nice gift to us from the Rotary. And that's it, unless anybody has a question.
Public Works, Steve?
I'd just like to let the board know that very proud of some work that our Highway Group did this week, some roadside drainage over on Meg's Road. I know it doesn't look like much, you go over there and you won't see anything that reflects the hard work that they did, but it's a great improvement from a road that was deteriorating because of poor drainage. We've, on the Public Works Committee, have been talking about drainage throughout the village, and this was a project that needed to get done. They did a really great job, so I'm very, very pleased for what they did. That's it.
Move on to the police chief, and I just wanted to make a note for people to think of this in the future. We were on vacation, and we asked for a police check at our house. We filled out the form and, and got a note from the chief that six different times, a police officer was at our house checking doors, windows, making sure our house was intact. So, that is a service that's available to everybody in the village, right?
Yes, absolutely. People go away on vacation. We would encourage folks to let us know, just call our office. Luanne or Dick will take your information, our clerical folks, and it gets assigned to one of our officers, and I think the mayor was gone for about a week or so, and it always comes to me, and I send everyone a letter letting them know how many times their home was checked and some of the other services we provide, and it's very popular with folks. So, and then the only other thing, Mr. Mayor, is I would just echo Ruth's comments and to encourage people to take advantage of the opportunity to find out what scams and different things, fraud-type things are going on, especially for seniors. My parents got a phone call, my parents are village residents here, I got a phone call two days ago from someone telling them that their oldest grandchild was in jail, had been beaten up, and my father started talking, and after about 10 seconds, I, he tried to keep talking, and I just kept saying, it's a scam, it's a scam, it's a scam, until he finally got it through his head, being 81-years-old, that this was a scam. So, you know, fortunately, he said, well, I'll call my son, who's the chief, and the guy said, don't call him. But those calls are out there, anyone could be victimized, they're very sophisticated in what they do. They sit there, their job all day is to keep calling people and hopefully get someone on the phone that buys into this and gives them money. So, if there's an opportunity to become more educated upon it, I encourage all area residents to take advantage of that opportunity at our Camp Wood Senior Center.
Very good. Thanks, chief. Pending business. Item A, can I get a motion to adopt a resolution transferring the sum of up to $15,000 from the village's highway repair reserve fund in order to pay for the roadway striping work to be completed in 2019?
Moved. I'll second it.
Questions?
No. With these reserve funds, we have to repay? Is that what, okay.
The only, the only time you have to repay is if it's an emergency and you do it without the public hearing.
Okay.
If you, so those, that's, there are two roads you can take. One is the public hearing on notice, which is what we have here, and then it's expended. If it's an emergency and you take it out without the hearing, then you have to repay it, and there's half, and then half, and the rest of it, it's due next year.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item B, can I get a motion to award the roadway striping project to Dixie Sweeping Service an amount of $13,671 as bid on Wednesday, July 17th, 2019?
Moved. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item C, discussion possible action regarding signing on with permit to facilitate our employee handbook at a cost of $2,500 to the village. We should have a paper from the company that does it to explain the type of things that they include in the handbook. We did get an email from the county with their handbook, but without any updating. So, it's an older handbook, 50 pages long. I did not print it out for everybody to read. I can email it to anybody who would like to look at it. I think, again, our three people who've been working on the handbook, Mo, Steve, and Mike, are really of the opinion that this is significant and important enough to have a We did get an email from the county with their handbook, but without any updating, so it's an older handbook, 50 pages long. I did not print it out for everybody to read. I can email it to anybody who would like to look at it. I, I think, again, our, the three people who've been working on the handbook, Mo, Steve, and Mike, are really of the opinion that this is significant and important enough to have a professional firm do the handbook, particularly with the things that involve sexual harassment, workplace violence, all those types of things, to make sure that, that they're written the way they should be written, and, so. Discussion is the first part of this list, so anybody's got any more thought on that?
Would they be able to provide, like, ongoing updates to the handbook, too? Do you think?
I believe so, I don't know.
Okay, just curious.
I didn't, I didn't pursue it too much, just because I wanted to know, you know, if we could do it, but I do have a, a call into them, we have to go through our workers' comp carrier, because they are splitting the costs with us, and the woman is on vacation, so. I wasn't able to find, I understand, the last meeting, Mark was wondering what the timetable was, I wasn't able to find that out.
Okay.
Yet, but.
So you anticipated my, my question, because I, I don't see it on the, on the paper here, but I think it's, it's a worthwhile project, I just don't wanna have an, some type of a, no deadline for submittal. I think we should have some recurring updates on how it's going and when we should expect it.
I just, I'm wondering, though, if I do, you know, I certainly will ask the question, but I think they're gonna have to see what we have to do before they probably can give us a.
Okay, that's fair.
Somewhat of an answer.
With that in mind, would I take the, the existing contracts between our bargaining units and review those?
Those will supersede any.
Right, but to make sure that.
Right, I understand, I mean, it should be somewhat consistent, just to at least reflect that we have them.
Yeah.
Right.
So I, I don't know, I guess I.
We'll leave this on, and hope that we get some of that information by the next meeting.
Well, well, but, they're not contracting with permit, they're gonna contract with us.
Yes.
So at some point, when we go to write a contract with them, we establish, well, we can establish the timeframe, get an understanding of what information they need, and what we have readily available, and provide them to them. I mean, we can try to secure that upfront, but it's kinda the details that we would, we would sit down, and, and at twenty-five hundred dollars, our cost, five thousand, then we might ask, is there also a service that provides annual or some, or every two-year updates? And they might say, yes, for an additional five hundred dollars, you can do that. I don't know if permit would contribute to that, but those are some, some things that we can do once we sit down with them, you know, some of those details.
I'd like to know, question about reproduction costs, is it free and clear once they're done with the product, we can distribute it as necessary without some stupid little fee program or something?
Generally, they are copyrighted, though, so you can't distribute them to anyone but them.
We don't do it, it's a public document.
Yeah.
So, do we, we're all comfortable with, with us at least proceeding?
Let's get some more.
To get more info and, and let them know we are interested, and when we get some more detail, then we can officially approve the spending, and maybe we won't, maybe we'll hear things we won't wanna hear, you know, that's too long, or whatever, but certainly can't be any longer than what we've been doing.
I was just gonna say, well, it's been on pending for a while, so.
Been going a while, and I, and I appreciate the work that you guys have done, and I understand the job you had, to take in the old document like that and try to rework it, and you probably would've done it well, except you might not have had everything in it that needed to be there. So can we just keep that on the agenda, Mo? And we'll see what we can figure out here quick. All right, move on to new business. Can I get a motion accepting the resignation of John P. Retkowski as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals effective August 1st, 2019?
Moved.
I'll second it.
John is moving to Florida, Jupiter, Florida, the company that he works for, that's their headquarters, and it's, it's been tough for John, because he is a very serious member of the zoning board, and he's out of the country a lot of times, he's in South America, I don't, I don't know exactly what he does, but he had, he had hinted before that he might not be on this board too much longer, well, now he's moving away. And we do have two pretty good candidates that Greg has talked with, and I'll get together with him when he gets back from vacation, and we'll set them up, and if they look like they're serious about it, we'll put them on the agenda for the next meeting. And, because right now, we're short one, we were hoping that we were gonna name one and an alternate, so now we'll just be naming two new members and still be looking for an alternate, so. Eric Reinagel, who's the new member on the, on the board, has been out looking, and I got an email from him the other day with a suggestion, so. Yeah, yeah, he's very active, and I told him I appreciated his recruiting efforts, and, so, for people out there, there are possibilities, you wanna be on the zoning board, planning board, architectural review board, there's, there's spots, we'd love to have you. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Item B, motion to declare two computer desks at Canton Woods as surplus.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Item C, discussion, possible action to support and adopt the 30-year Anadog County Industrial Development Agency, OCIDA, pilot with a developer that is renovating and redeveloping the existing senior housing facility known as Conifer Village located at 700 Conifer Drive. You have the, the resolution that Bob has drawn up, and we have the information on what the 30-year pilot looks like, it's a, originally, they had asked for 40 years and a 1% increase, and Jamie Rodems contacted him from the school and said, we're thinking 30 years and 2%. And they went, okay. So, for people that don't understand, it's a tax break for the person doing the work, but for us, the tax we were making on it, we will get a 2% increase each year, which we would probably not get if the work didn't get done, if they leave it as-is. This is a project where they're going to strip all the outside of the building off, all new windows, all new doors, probably fix all new roofs, add on to the community room and make that bigger, they're talking about all new appliances, countertops, bathroom, you know, sink, tub, maybe get rid of all the tubs and just have the walk-in showers, toilets, everything. This is gonna be like a whole new building when they get done, except for the initial structure, and hopefully, you know, make that area look just a little bit nicer, I mean, it's kind of an old-looking area, and this would jazz it up and make people living there feel nicer. So we have a resolution, we, we have some questions, I know, that people have asked me, the, the public hearing on this is August 12th, we, at, at this point, if you wanna give me your questions and just give me the right to, and give, pass the resolution, contingent upon answers to those questions satisfying you, because we won't meet again before the public hearing, maybe it isn't important, necessarily that important, then we sign it before then, I don't know. What would you think, Bob?
Well, this, the public hearing is just to get input, and I'm not sure when it's on the agenda at the IDA, that's probably when they want to show the municipalities the favor.
All right, well, then, we can wait till the next meeting, and I'll try to get some of your answers, I would appreciate if you sent me an email with a couple of the questions, so I'd make sure I got them all, you know, each of you had a question or two. I'd like to not go and ask.
I think maybe the most important thing is, does this continue, ownership changes, if, does the current use of the property stay the same?
Yeah.
Those, those things, I think are the most important.
Good questions.
Is it your opinion that the developer would not do the project unless he gets the pilot? Because they're probably gonna get federal money to do the project to begin with.
Yeah, they, they need the break, though, that's all, it's a, this federal program that they're involved, that includes the pilot program being part of it, I don't know. I really.
I'll send you an email.
Okay.
Funding is subject to.
I, I doubt that.
A tax break?
Well, I think in order to qualify, they had, they had to have a tax break to make the numbers work, so, that's, you know, I'm going by what they're telling me, you know, I mean, who knows, you know, we've heard stories before. I don't know if this is like the one at Tri-County where they'd already started the project, so really didn't need it, I get a feeling that this is more significant in their proceeding, but I'll check and get some answers for it. All right, so we'll put that one pending, okay? Item D, can I get a motion to ratify the successor collective bargaining agreement covering the period of March 1st, 2017, through February 28th, 2020, with the Baldwinsville Police Benevolent Association, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the village, and approve the appropriation of any additional funds necessary to implement the terms of said successor agreement?
I'm happy to make that motion.
I'll be happy to second it.
You guys did a lot of great work, I am very grateful for how hard you did work. Hopefully, this will, they've already, the police have already approved it, so, we'll sign it, and.
Well, like any, what's the rule of thumb, like any good agreement, nobody's happy, it's a pretty good agreement, so, they wanted more and we wanted.
Less, and.
And, and so, I think it, it's gonna work in the end.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Item E, motion authorize the mayor to sign the $6,000 grant application with the Department of State for the proposed overlook project.
Moved.
I'll second that.
This is an overlook, gonna be somewhere down on the Meadow Street Riverfront, that will be a nice place to watch the eagles fly and the swans swim, and, it sounds like a song, but I'm not gonna sing.
We have a location picked out, Steve did some work, we, we've kinda scouted it out, and it should be a really good observation point, quiet spot.
A nice feature when you're walking the trail.
And it is a great place to see the eagles in the wintertime, and, so it's probably, will get some use.
Beautiful. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Anything else we need to discuss before we pay bills? Saying none, can I get a motion to pay bills as audited?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at what time, Bruce?
I don't know, I don't have that watch.
What's that?
That's the one.
Eight twelve? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Meeting get a motion, can I get a motion?
Moved.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Be a little excited once in a while. See you in a couple weeks.